And regular agenda items. So we'll go ahead and move on to the regular session. I've got Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Bob Troyer with the invocation, and I've got Councilmember William Meredith with the pledges to the flags. Proclamation, National Good Neighbor Day. Item D1, public hearing ordinance establishing the tax rate. Questions or comments on that one? It's got very specific language.
I wouldn't like to make that motion.
Do you have something we'd like to say before? Something to add to it?
Give some context, I understand. Thank you, Bob. Item D2, public hearing consideration of ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending the fee schedule. This is our standard. Visitors forum consent agenda. Consent agenda item three is approval of the minutes. Any questions or issues on the minutes? Item four, approval of the fire protection and emergency ambulance services interlocal agreement with Denton County. Five, bid award for the official city of Louisville newspaper to be Denton Media Company.
Is it always Denton Record Chronicle or do we look at other?
It's been, it was a Louisville leader for years.
There was a leader for years. We only got one bid now, so.
Yeah.
And there's rules on like the circulation and other stuff. So I think part of it is that the leader has, no longer has that same kind of circulation.
No.
But yeah, the state has a whole bunch of, and of course, I'm sure businesses have lobbied for that, so. Item six, authorizing participation with the state of Texas. This is another one of our opioid settlements.
Is this related to the last one? This is completely separate. Okay. And this is?
And this is 14,000 over 10 years.
Over 10.
14,000 over 10 years?
Over 10 years.
Yep. Item G7, alternative standard to regular due to the 35 corridor overlay associated with building orientation.
I had a question about that, but I'll wait until we get out there for that.
Next up, G8 ordinance of the city council amending the adopted and approved budget ordinance for the fiscal year. Is this our movement, moving funds over?
This is the one we do every year at the end of the year that?
Yes, that's the supplemental appropriations, yep. So that's effectively moving leftover money from last year into this year.
Yeah, and all the supplementals we've done throughout the year are put into our ordinance at the end of the year, and then we have three new ones that were included as part of this package.
And we had all those in our package, so. Any questions on that one? Item eight, doesn't look like I have any staff reports. So we're good there. Workshop, I'm sorry, closed session? Okay. So we do have some closed session material to go through. Any other questions on the agenda before we move into the item B, potential revisions to council's policy on speaker protocol? I do want to frame this up a little bit. I had requested this a few months back. I've been talking with a lot of local mayors in the region, and you may have noticed that there are folks in the world that choose to take the public square and try to monetize it for YouTube and clicks, and this has been going on. We have not seen a lot of it, we've seen a little bit of it.
We have seen a little bit of it.
But there are incredibly disruptive folks that choose to take the public square and use it for something other than it was intended. And so what I asked staff to do was to take a look at our policies. So in general, what are our speakers' policies? Let's make sure that we have good, strong policies that are defendable, and that we have a conversation about that. So in none of that, where I brought it to Jennifer and staff, and none of that was really a conversation around trying to make things more efficient or streamlined, but in that conversation, we did uncover that there is some documentation discrepancies between what we have in policy, what we have on paper, and what we speak to or what we've historically done. So there's a conversation to be had around all of that. So staff has brought to us some different things that we might want to look at based on what they've seen in other peer cities. Thankfully, from what I can tell and the feedback I've gotten, we have some pretty strong policies in place that allow us to, you know, keep a limit on that kind of disruptive behavior and to keep it focused on the people's business, which I think is great. The other piece of it is just, you know, maybe some cleanup and some conversation around a couple of ideas. So with that framework, I hope that you guys understand that this absolutely came from a place of, let's make sure that we're protected and that the public good is impressed upon this, that this isn't some place where people can come to get YouTube clicks. This is instead a place where people can come to have serious discussions about how their city runs. So that was the frame, that was the package. I'm sure there's a couple of questions and some ideas that we need to throw around, but that's why we're here. So I appreciate staff taking time to dig through the policies so that we can, we can do a refresh on this. So with that, I'm going to leave it to our Assistant City Mayor.
Yeah, I will just, actually Jennifer's going to do the presentation. She and Claire worked on it together, and Claire's out today, so Jennifer will be handling the bulk of it. I just wanted you to know, kind of the flow of it will be her to give you kind of some background on current and policy as well as practice of what we currently do, then she'll give you some perspective of what other cities do, just so you'll have that. And then there'll be some recommendation slides for your discussion.
Okay, so why do we need an adopted policy? Basically, we want speakers, staff, and council to know what the processes are. We want to provide the presiding officer with the flexibility needed to effectively run the meeting, and then we also want to provide an opportunity for the council to hear from the public. Our current policy was adopted in 2019. So on this slide, we just have some of our current timelines. So according to our policy, we allow for public hearings, we allow 10 minutes for the applicant with five minutes for rebuttal, and then basically for everybody else, we allow 10 minutes. We do have a noted conflict. The speaker card does have the 10 minutes on there, but in practice, we've been giving five minutes, except for the applicant. For visitors forum, speakers are allowed five minutes each, and then on all other items, we've been giving five minutes as practice, but that's not specifically addressed in our policy. So these are some additional time limits. Speakers using a translator get twice the amount of time. We do have a provision in there allowing the presiding officer to equally reduce the time, and then we have a provision in there that allows people, the speakers, to submit, file written comments with the city secretary, and then those are passed on to you. So these are just some of our other procedures. You know, they basically speak to, you know, we require the speaker to fill out a speaker card, what they do when they approach the podium, and then also information on what they're supposed to do if they want to have an idling from the consent agenda. So for enforcement, this basically says the chief of police is in charge when it comes to enforcement. Now, if we ever actually get to that level, we're probably going to come into executive So staff did a survey of our survey cities to find out what other cities are doing. So again, for the public hearing, what is in our actual, or our policy is that the applicant gets 10 minutes with five minutes for rebuttal, and then everybody else gets 10 minutes. So as you can see from our survey cities, very few of them allow the five minutes or more than five minutes. There are also provisions in here for some cities where they do different amounts of time for applicants versus the other speakers. And what we did find interesting is we didn't see anything in the policies in the cities that we surveyed that spoke to the five minutes for rebuttal. We do like to have that, we would like to keep that in our policy. It gives the applicant an opportunity to address some of the comments that other speakers may make, so we would like to keep that in the policy. So our staff recommendation on this is to allow 10 minutes for applicants on public hearing items, the five minutes for rebuttal, and then five minutes for all other speakers. So I'd like to hear your thoughts on that.
And council, I mean, these are recommendations. I think the two issues that, I don't even know if they're issues, they're just conversation pieces, and we can do whatever we want. One is, is there an interest in changing the written time to actually match what we've done in practice, aside from the last meeting or two, I think, where we actually had folks that saw the discrepancy? Which, that's on me for not double checking all that. So that's one. I think the other one is technology use from?
She'll get to that one.
Okay, so we want to just deal with this one for right now?
Yeah.
Okay, then let's go ahead and talk about this one. We can knock this one down, and then we can move to the other one.
I'm assuming that all the times that were listed would all be in compliance with the state law, right?
Yes, that's correct.
So is there, what does the state say we have to do? Does it specify a timeframe at all? It just says we have to allow people to speak.
I don't believe it specifies a timeframe. We can definitely find that out for you.
I have cities that I know that are local that have public comment, or have comment on all things as part of public comment, so it's not, they don't even bring it up. You can't speak to the item on the agenda, you have to speak to it in public comment. And sometimes they put public comment at the end of the whole meeting. So the agenda items have already been covered, and they get to speak, but they're not speaking before a decision has been made. Those are outliers.
Well, in every slot.
But there are, I mean?
I don't want to do that.
Yeah, but state law is, as far as I can tell, very non-restrictive. You just, you have to provide it, it just doesn't really give you a?
Don't say that.
Before or during consideration, yeah. So I've seen cities that have done it after consideration, so they need better attorneys. So that's that piece. But yeah, other questions?
For the public hearing, I have just a couple of concerns about this. Oh, one, I don't, see, you're right, I actually did a fair amount of kind of looking at different stuff, Liz, I apologize, I'm trying to reloyalize everybody, I looked at different things, I looked at some recent legislation against the Austin, Austin City Council where they had mixed changes. And overall, it just speaks to being fair. I mean, that's really kind of what it was, to be fair on everybody if you want. I couldn't find anywhere where it said time, any specific times. I have concerns that an applicant gets 10 minutes, rebuttals get five, or not rebuttals, but 10 minutes and the speakers get five. Applicants, I don't think that's fair. Applicants, they've talked with staff, they've talked maybe with council before, they've done a lot of homework before they come in, and they've laid a lot of groundwork down. To have them, to have speakers have five, half that time, I just don't think it's fair. I feel like they should get the same amount of time to speak as the applicant gets. Same thing with rebuttals. The way this is framed up, applicant speaks, the speaker speaks, probably in opposition, usually we see opposition, so it's support, of five minutes, then the applicant can rebut for five minutes, but the speaker gets no opportunity to come back and rebut that. So I would propose 10 minutes per, and then five minutes for rebuttal on both sides. That's what I'd like to see. I think that's fair and equitable.
So I take a slightly different angle. I mean, I get, the challenge with fairness in this one is that the applicant gets 10 minutes, the community can have hours and hours, because all it takes is for me to reach out to my neighborhood and say, hey, I need you to come speak on this, and each one of them gets five minutes. And anybody who's smart will absolutely do that. I would, if I had any issue whatsoever, I would bury this council in that amount of time, so.
Good to know.
So I don't know if there's a one-to-one Patrick fairness here, because they're speaking in two different types of formats, and that's where I'm trying to figure out what's fair in that mind. But that's, you know, if I'm going to play devil's advocate, that's the other side of the coin, I think. And then, you know, I don't mind a rebuttal of a rebuttal, but I don't, I don't know where you stop that.
You stop it at one. I mean, that's, you get a rebuttal, somebody else gets to go back and rebut that, and then that's done. Then the driver stops it.
But everybody?
Unless you, but what if you had 30 people?
And all 30 of them?
And all 30 of them are going to rebut.
And that's a fair point, I guess, but I don't know, like, do that a little bit more? I hadn't considered that option.
Is there a way that, I mean, I think the point of the timeframe is to make sure that everyone gets an opportunity to speak, because let's be honest, when it's, if it's 30 people, if each one of them gets 10 minutes, we're really going to get three people in and everybody's going to start checking out, mentally, like, it's just too long. Yeah, so I think, is there a way to give, to say that we will give, do we have to define the number of minutes, I guess is what I'm saying, because sometimes we're going to have 30 people show up, want to speak, and we say, okay, well, you know, let's give everybody four minutes. Or if there's only two speakers, you know, give them a little more time. I don't know.
The policy as written does give the mayor latitude to change the amount of time. So I can, the mayor has the ability to either increase or decrease time.
Based on the crowd.
And I think you've seen me do that.
Yeah, but I mean, it's also because you get a big group of people, and they're all saying the same thing, I know.
I will say, Austin just had a problem with that. Austin just had a problem with that, so there's a rule that says speakers are often grouped or capped collectively, which, that's what we mount, if there are 30 people, we're going to reduce everybody's time to three, you're effectively capping the overall group. Now they have to follow the law. Individual speakers are full-time per item, cannot arbitrarily reduce time based on the number of speakers. So that was a judgment came out Travis, a judgment came out of Travis County, it was upheld on appeal. So I have concern about that.
Yeah, no, that's, I mean, so they call that a cap, so any time limit is a cap?
Yeah, so I'm going to defer to Liz and to certainly, yeah, we want to look at that a little bit, but basically, Austin got slapped three different times here to throw out, save our Springs Foundation, they didn't feel like they were being represented fairly. And they went in, and one of the things that they do, they say, okay, we're going to go through, and I see there's 10 people here, everybody gets five minutes, we're going to make everybody three minutes for efficient use of time. And they were told they can't do that anymore, they must allow individual speakers, their full-time per item cannot arbitrarily reduce the time based on the number of speakers.
Is that based on their policy, though?
This was the judgment that came down out of Travis County.
Oh, it was a court decision.
Yeah, so I would want to go into closed session on that if we want to have that conversation, because that's attorney, privileged attorney conversation.
And I am way over the wrong about that, I'm not an attorney. I can read stuff and usually kind of figure it out what I want.
Sure. What concerned me about that is now, our presentation from a developer goes out the window, too. They could sit up there for two hours. If there's?
Well, it's not arbitrary cap for rules are five minutes, you can't change that to three for the?
Okay, so that's, okay. Interesting, okay.
Mayor, can I just go ahead and take you on to?
Do you want to just do close?
Close session for our consultation with?
Consultation with attorney?
5:00, 20:00, 7:01.
7:01, awesome, thank you. We'll go ahead and do that now. Now, so okay, let's go back into workshop session, let's take a couple of minutes and make, where does council want staff to move forward to bring back a recommendation on time? If any?
There was one thing that I found really interesting, that I think might be an interesting compromise, but I saw Jennifer, where you quoted Denton County, Denton, they have a process by which council can move, make a motion to give somebody more time, which I, that might be a nice compromise here, get five, and then let that, we have the discretion of council to make a motion.
Well, don't you have that discretion?
Well, he does, but council doesn't. So that's, that's what I would ask. If we're going to go through a limit, can we allow council to make a motion to give more time during a meeting? Denton seems to be doing that, I misread that.
But Denton's meetings last till one or two o'clock.
I don't care how long they last, it doesn't matter to me.
I'm looking for some input.
I like 10, 10, and five.
You like 10, 10, and five? Do you want a second rebuttal? You're okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
I guess for that you'd have, nobody wants to rebut.
I'm not okay with the 10, 10, 5, 5. That's too much.
Okay.
Can I get 10, 10, 5?
I like the 10, 5, 5.
I can go to 10, 10, 5, I'm okay with that. That's right.
I've got, I've got a couple folks that are on, I've got a couple folks, I need you to express your opinion.
I feel like the current process that we have right now works just fine, so I, you know, if it's not broke, I don't see a reason to try to fix it. I'm fine with a 10, 5, 5. You have the ability to?
To extend.
To extend, if somebody comes up and they're making some really good points, you know, we do have a reliever for that, so I'm fine with the way it is.
I don't know that it says not broke, but if asked for 10, and we have granted it, but?
And we could always ask you, Mayor, could you allow him additional time?
I mean, that's possible.
Is there a reason not to go, if we're going to go 10, 5, 5, is there a reason not to put that to a council vote for that?
Well, we, I mean, what we're asking for is a recommendation right now. And then, can I?
Not official, though.
That was, I was asking the opinion of the council.
She said what we're currently doing, are we doing 10, 10, 5 right now?
So we're do, historically, we've done 10, 5, 5, but in the last couple of meetings, we did 10, 10, 5, because that was documented on cards.
Let me clarify what I meant. I meant the 10, 5, 5, because that's typically what we've done is five minutes, and that seems to work pretty well.
Correct, the cards.
I think the cards are correct, I think we deviated from the cards. I would say that printed cards are probably the accurate statement.
I prefer the 10, 5, 5.
So I think we've got some direction on that.
Yes, sir.
You know, we absolutely can, when it comes back, have a further conversation on it and see where we go. So with that, we're going to go ahead and take a pause on the workshop session, we'll go back into regular session, or we'll join regular session here in about three minutes, then we'll come back to workshop. Good evening, we're going to call this regular session of the Louisville City Council to order, and we do have a quorum tonight. First on the agenda is the invocation with Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Bob Troyer.
Please join me in a moment of solemn contemplation. Amen.
Councilmember Meredith with the flag.
Please join me in the pledges. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas state under God, one and indivisible.
With that, we are going to move back into workshop session, so that is actually going to be projected, you can probably hear it, or if you'd like to sit in the other room with us, that'd be great, but we've got a little more work to do in workshop, and then we'll come back out for the rest of the agenda. Jennifer, just a quick point of clarification, the written policy document, does it have 10 minutes for speakers in the written policy document, or is the 10 minutes on?
Both, it does.
It's in both?
Both, there is.
Okay.
It has the 10 minutes.
But we have been, we have been doing five minutes as a practice. Super, thank you for that. All right, item two.
Okay, so the next item is visitor's forum. So our current protocol is speakers are allowed five minutes. Again, looking at our survey cities, 11 of our survey cities allow three minutes, just a few of them allow the five minutes. So our staff recommendation on this is to allow three minutes for speakers for visitor's forum as well.
And what do we currently have?
Currently, we have five minutes.
Yeah, five minutes, thank you.
Did we used to have three?
We used to have two. I remember when we had, that's what I was asking, Lonnie, you remember when we had two minutes to speak, and then we went up from there.
Yeah, I could have swore public forum, public comment was three minutes.
Were what?
It was three minutes, I thought that, I thought that was three minutes for public comments, it's always been five.
I don't know when it was changed, but it's been five for a while.
At least since 2019, because that's when the document that this came off of was.
In 2019.
So, keep it with five, reduce it to three, bump it to 10?
No.
Everything's 10.
It's just, it's a nice round number.
You know, I like five, I could live with three frankly, you know, there's, I can tell everybody in this room has probably been on the other side of the podium, and three minutes goes really fast when you're up there, especially when you've got this sort of Damocles hanging over your head. I'm a real follower, so I'm trying not to go over, so I'm trying to like edit my comments as I'm speaking, we've got longer in some sections, short and other. I prefer to keep it at five, or move it to five, or keep it at five, whatever it is today, but I don't feel as passionate about this as I do about the other things.
I feel like if we habit it, we, it kind of forces people to kind of prepare before they come and speak to us, and really just like dig into their point, which I think is the most efficient use of everyone's time, especially since we allow them that time to speak, and then we know it's not part of the policy, but we always have someone from staff go out with that person and talk to them, so they get more exposure than just that time. So I'm okay with three minutes.
I'm good with three.
I'm good with three. I'm good with three.
And I think they should come prepared, they should practice at home, and then walk in the door ready to present.
So we've got consensus on this one, sounds like, for something to bring back.
So for a regular hearing, our current practice is that speakers are allowed five minutes. Now, the policy does not actually speak to this, but this is what we have been doing. Again, 11 of our survey cities allow three minutes, very few of them allow five minutes, and so our staff recommendation on this is also three minutes.
I didn't think that we had public, I don't recall having public comment on a regular hearing.
Yeah, well, they stand up in their four against it.
They just don't do it very often.
They just, yeah, they don't do it all.
That's what I'm saying, is that I'm not thinking of a time where we had a comment on a regular hearing item, because it's different than a public hearing, right?
But it's still a decision that council's making, that residents have an opinion on.
So do they have to fill out a speaker card?
They do.
Forehand? Okay, and that's how we know if there's somebody in the audience that wishes to weigh in on this?
So refresh my memory here on the difference between the public hearing items and the regular hearing items. Because in my head, public hearing are big, big deal items, somebody's going to put a warehouse up next to my house or whatever.
And there's a presentation about it.
Regular hearing items are much more benign, is my, my legal?
Things that we would pull off consent agenda, it'd be a regular hearing, yeah. And we don't have to go through the two-step process of closing the public hearing and all that stuff.
Usually things that have public hearings are required by statute.
Required by statute? I'm the same way here, I'm always going to lean towards more time rather than less, but I'm okay with it here, given the nature, which is in all these regular items, I'm okay with that.
I also, I mean, I'm good with three minutes, and also just to say that if somebody has any comments about any of the agenda items, they're always welcome to email all of us beforehand, and, you know, so there are other avenues than just speaking during, you know, the public setting, so, I mean, there is that, too. If that time allotment is just not enough, they can always communicate over email beforehand.
Here are your consensus on this one, too.
So these are some adjustment of time. Louisville protocol, now speakers using a translator are given twice the amount of time. It also says in our policy that the presiding officer may equally reduce the amount of time. What we did notice when we were looking at our other survey cities is their policy also had a provision to extend the time. Ours does not at this time, so we want to add that, so that the presiding officer could reduce or extend the time.
And we can look at that production, whether or not that's legal, after we have your direction.
So another thing that we noticed is that a couple of the cities offer an incentive. So another thing that we noticed is that a couple of the cities offer an incentive for, you know, groups of different amounts of people to come in, and if they designate a spokesperson, they'll give them additional time. So we wanted to also add an incentive in our policy. So our recommendation on this is to maintain the additional allotted time when using a translator, which currently is two, is double the time. So if we go to three minutes, it would be six. And then to allow the presiding officer to also extend the time. And then as an incentive to streamline the comments, add a provision to double the time if a group of five or more elects a spokesperson to speak on their behalf.
I really like the incentive.
I do too.
Yeah. Yeah, I think this is a great idea.
It doesn't lie that you see people try to seat time for other folks, I wanna seat my remaining two minutes or whatever. It does kind of align with that.
And then nobody's telling them they have to, because they can
Yeah, it's an option.
You know, and go do the math and figure out how to maximize their time if that's what they wanna do.
Yeah, I am aside, I was reading something about how we've been using the police translator stuff to talk with, like in Mandarin. I'm excited to see when that's gonna come to the podium out there.
Yeah. But I'm also, I love that we made the additional time. I would hate to avoid that for translators.
Yeah, same thought. Now, the presiding officer to extend the time limit, this is a little bit different than what we talked about before, because I think right now, the presiding officer can say, everybody gets 10 minutes for this topic. This says, your presentation is very compelling, you specifically can go another two minutes. Is that what that's saying, Jennifer?
If the item has additional complexities.
Was that at the item level or the speaker level? Is that at the item level or the speaker level?
Oh, well, our current policy is just a reduction in time, and it's, you know, it can be based on the number of speakers, you know, to kind of streamline the meeting, so this would be the same. You could extend the time across the board, or also if an item has additional complexities.
So it may be an unwritten policy, but I know now the presiding officer can extend the time for an item, because I think you've done that, and I've done that.
Yeah.
So, but I'm wondering if this is, is that saying a person can have extended time? So if you have, if you have somebody out there saying, they're making great points, and they run out of time, is this saying that person can extend the time? I'm guessing probably not. I mean, you'd have to be equitable to everybody, I'm assuming. Is that right?
We could clarify either way that you would like to see it written, so.
Yeah, I mean, as I interpret it, and of course, I'm gonna interpret it favorable to me, I would, I could extend the timeframe for that individual speaker, but I'm not extending it for everybody.
Okay.
Now, there's a question of fairness around that. I get it. There might be even a question of legality around that, but that's why we're going through this conversation here.
I actually like that, because this is, because I do think you might have 10 people out there, nine of which are just reiterating what each one has already said, if the 10th one comes up and they've got some great points. So I'd like having a finer-toothed comb or sharper tipped pencil, whatever you wanna call it.
And when you say translator, is that strictly language translation?
It could be language, sign language, or foreign language.
You got a different concept?
Yeah, no, I was just, just wanna make sure, covering all bases.
So I would, I would like for us to consider that instead of just leaving this up to discretion, the presiding officer would like to have the opportunity to request, either through council motion or unofficial motion, say, Mayor, Presiding Officer, I'm really enjoying what this person has to say. They make good points. Can we give them more than, can we give them two minutes? By just saying it solely at the presiding officer's discretion.
I think council always has the opportunity to say that during the meeting now. There's pros and cons of that. I mean, let's, I mean, because I, okay, I like what this guy's saying, but I don't like what that guy's saying, so you can, I can let one talk and the other not, so I get, I get the negativity on that side, but it also flips the other way, too. If a council member has a particular agenda that they wanna emphasize or not, so. I mean, I don't have a problem with however we do it. I mean, that's just a parameter that we, when we're starting to pick, we're starting to pick winners or losers, and I'm really good with extending time limit, and I'm really good with if council requests. I don't know if I, I don't know how formal I wanna make that. I mean, it's up to you all. I mean.
I've been here four years. I didn't know that was an option for me.
It's an option.
That's fair.
Yeah.
I've asked you before. I've leaned over and went.
So, I've been here four years. I didn't know that was an option for me.
Sure.
So I'd like to call it my life, I'm good.
Build some language and see what that looks like. You want that, do you want that to look like a line that just says council may request an extension of time of the mayor? Or do you wanna see that council would need to take, make a motion?
It doesn't matter to me. As long as, as long as there's an opinion in the room that says, I need value out of this, I'd like to extend time.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter to me how formal that is.
And I think, I think you, the way you've gotten it, though, on the flip side, you asked questions of those folks and extended their speaking time.
Right.
So there's another, that's another spin on the conversation.
Yeah.
That's, that's a very good point.
I'm not sure I would want that in there, in my opinion, but not because of you, but you saying, I'm not sure I would want that in there. Just, I think leave it like it is is way better to me.
I think it's a fair point, is I can extend all I want by asking probing questions of whoever's speaking. I think it's fair. Okay, withdrawing. I think it's a fair point.
I'm glad we're digging into this. I mean, I think it's important that, you know, we have a, we have a process that's fair to everybody, so.
And I think we need to keep in mind that while we're the people who are currently sitting on this council, this is not about us and how we handle it. This is for future councils and mayors.
I'm also impressed at the amount of time we do get compared to a lot of our peer cities. We seem to be on the higher end, so that's great. Anything else?
So is everybody okay with?
I think, I think we're okay with these.
So this slide just really deals with the rules of decorum. So this is a statement that the mayor reads at visitor's forum. We did notice that a lot of the other cities have language like this in their policy. However, we do not have language like this. And so what we are proposing is to add this language into our policy and take out the part where it says speakers, will we allow five minutes for testimony, because that is addressed in other areas. So that's our recommendation, is to add this language.
I'd like to remove the address.
That's coming up.
Okay. Okay.
Good idea. We'd like to remove the address.
They filled that out on their speaker card, so if there's a matter of public record on where somebody is from, we get that information. But I really don't like, I mean, I'm reading my address out to the public record. It's going on YouTube. Somebody doesn't agree with me, they now have my address.
What happens with the speaker cards? Are they posted? The speaker cards aren't posted now, but you could do an open records request and get that.
Okay.
Right, but it is on the video, and then it is also.
Yeah, if they say it out loud right now, when they say it out loud, it's on the video, so everybody sees it.
Right.
And the bottom
Are we talking about that right now?
No, but we are in a minute.
Okay, because I have a, I have a, an additional
A nuance?
Yes.
Okay.
So when we get, yeah.
Yeah, I think
We're gonna talk about that in a second, then I'll hold.
But I'm holding first, so you have to wait.
So we're good with this, since it's addressed in another section?
You're the second hall, okay?
Yes. I'd like to request more time from the mayor, please.
So this slide talks about the use of AV system for speaker presentations. So our current practice is that we allow the applicants the ability to use the AV system, but all other speakers are required to submit paper copies. And if you're, if you look at our survey cities, they're kind of split on this. Seven survey cities do not allow the use of the AV system. Ten survey cities do allow it. Now, the majority of the cities that do allow it, they have varying deadlines for seminal of the electronic files. One of them, the afternoon of the meeting, all the way up to two days prior to the meeting. And our staff recommendation on this is to continue our current practice of allowing the applicant to use the AV system and then requiring the seminal of paper copies from all other speakers.
I feel like allowing everybody to bring in their own presentations is gonna be a logistical nightmare. And we're talking about, now we're not just talking about, you know, the time that they get to speak, but there's time between each one that now is, you know, you gotta get the presentation loaded, and you gotta get it pulled up, and, you know. Sometimes we have issues with the AV system, and it's not working, and it takes a minute, you know. You know, I just, if we have 30 people that wanna get 30 different presentations.
A lot of times.
I'm not trying to say anything negative about the AV system, but sometimes, you know, I mean, there's, and there's just, not everybody is using PowerPoint either, so we're not all in the same, yeah, I mean.
Not everybody knows how to use that stuff.
The next generation, they're, they don't use PowerPoint at all. They, I don't even know what they use, but they don't use PowerPoint. And, you know, to, there are, my point is that there's a variety of options, and for us to be able to accommodate all of that in a, an efficient way, it just seems like a nightmare to me.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna come in surprised at the different side of this. This is something I actually feel very passionately about. This is, presentation software is an $8 billion industry. There's a reason it's $8 billion. Everybody uses it all the time in their work. Most everybody does. I don't wanna extrapolate this out to say, well, what if we had 100 speakers, and everybody brought in a PowerPoint deck? I'm not, I'm not gonna go to that extreme. Could happen, probably won't happen. I do think that there's, what, 10 other cities that are doing it without it being a fiasco.
Right, there's 10 survey cities that are
They figured it out. We're as smart as the average bear. We can figure it out, too.
Oh, I've seen their council meetings. Those are fiascos. No.
We're smarter than them. We'll figure it out. So, wait, 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 let me take a little fish. So, I do think there's, and there's rules and regulations that we can have around this about how to make this happen two days beforehand, three days beforehand. Make sure it gets scanned for antivirus. You can't just walk in, go to the podium, say, put this in for me. I'm not, I'm not for that. It takes a little bit of plan, a little bit of prior thought to actually make this, make this happen. I think it's very unfair to let a developer or anybody else who's, who's an applicant present in a professional manner and then let, have somebody else come up with, you know, frankly, the equivalence of 1986 stack of paper that we have to look at. I think, I think that there's an optics to that that's unfair.
Okay, but could they not create a presentation and print it out and give it to us, and what's the difference?
So, that's right. So the developers and applicants should do the same thing. Staff should do the same thing. So either everybody gets AV or nobody gets AV. I think it's unfair to have one side do it and the other side don't.
My take, and this is a consumption issue, I can't see a presentation. I don't see it on the screens. It shows up on my little screen. I wanna go back to a slide that they, because they're nervous and they're flipping forward too fast. And this slide had the information that I wanted, but we're on to some other slide that they feel is more relevant, but this one is really singing to me. I have, I have to have a paper presentation. It's just, that is gonna give them the most opportunity for me to hear them. So, that's my take on this. If I just get an AV version, you're actually at a disadvantage when I'm paying attention to the argument. So I don't know, I don't know if technology, one way or the other, helps or hurts. I think it's just another tool in the conversation. I do get the, if one side gets to use it, why doesn't the other? I get that, and maybe that's, maybe that's okay. Maybe that all shows up in paper at that point, and, you know, they get a conversation that way. That would work better for me, actually.
That would work.
Because the developers do the same thing to me, is they're flipping past, like, no, no, I wanna see that elevation again. And we have that, that happens all the time in this council. Y'all are always asking to go back a slide or go forward a slide. So I, personally, 80's worked.
It does. As long as the plane goes even in my head, nobody uses AV, everybody uses AV.
I get that.
I'm okay with that.
Well, now, the staff needs to be able to use the AV.
So if staff can bring in a applicant's presentation as part of their presentation, more backed unfair again.
How many people have we had request to use the AV?
Is this right here?
How many people have we had requested to use the AV?
How many people have requested it?
We may have every three months. We may get a request, maybe not even that often. I've had a total of maybe three.
But have they requested in advance or when they get here?
It's generally when they get here.
So that we would see that.
But if we had a rule that required advance, then I don't know if it would be even that often, but.
I've had, I've had a couple people ask me, point out, point blank, I wanna use AV, you can use AV.
Sure.
I defer them back over to Jennifer and policy and things like that, but, so I, I don't know that I would consider that part of my decision is, well, nobody's done it before, therefore, nobody wants to do it. I think people have been told no, didn't know they could do it. I've used AV, and, you know, I've had an argument I wanna make. I use AV because it's powerful. It's an easier way to do it.
Well, and, you know, you bring up an interesting point, and this is, I'm gonna put this on our development team. And this is probably for an extended conversation with our development team. So my development team, you guys come in, and Richard, you give us a great presentation of what you guys have done, what the, what the city's done, what staff's tried to figure out. And then the developer kind of comes in, and it's kind of both of you talking for the same thing. And I'm, and I'm, maybe I'm, maybe I'm speaking for you instead of
Let's find out.
But let's, but it feels like maybe the two of you are making one big presentation together as opposed to the city's presentation and its take on this thing, then the developer in their 10 minutes, and then residents in their five minutes.
I concur, but I think that's the natural order of things, because the developer, I use developer, generically speaking, as any applicant.
Yes.
You've worked with staff, they've worked with Richard, they've come to a conclusion that now feel good about presenting to council. So it's a very natural thing for that to be a unified message, because that's what they've been trying to get to for two months or six months, whatever it is. So I see why that is.
But then, they're actually getting an unlimited amount of time, because staff doesn't have any time limits.
Yeah. So are you saying unlimited time for speakers?
I'm just saying the impression, and if we're talking about fairness, if, if there's more of a delineation between staff's presentation and the developer's presentation, would that give you more comfort?
I don't even know how you would do that, honestly, because I, I think I need staff's opinion on the things that present that the developers have put forth.
Oh, you're gonna get staff's opinion. They're gonna walk you through that, but then the developer might just say, I'm gonna take 10 minutes to give you my sales pitch.
Either AV is either, it's either a tool or it's not a tool.
Okay.
I think it is a tool. I think it should be used universally. And I think with some guidance on, you gotta submit two days, what, two days, three days advance, whatever it is. I think it's a tool. I think it's a powerful tool. Clearly, people using the sales presentation all the time to sell. And people, when they come up and they speak, regardless of what side you're on, you're selling. And I think we should have every tool available, especially tools they pay for. The AV equipment is paid for by taxpayer dollars. They should be able to use it.
I just, I don't want this to become something that is consuming a great deal of staff time to, to get all this stuff kind of formatted, and, you know, you've got 30 speakers, and what order are they going in, and, you know, how do we get everything queued up? I, I mean, I, I feel like with a, with staff's presentation, I mean, staff's presentation is, we gotta get the facts of the case, and we're getting that in a posted agenda, in the backup information anyway. That's all public information. So, I mean, if you wanna, I mean, if you wanna go there, I mean, that's, that's public record that's posted before. So, I mean, I don't think that there's any way that we could say that we gotta make an applicant, and we gotta give an applicant, and, and anybody who wants to speak for or against that applicant. I just don't know how to get the two completely equal in all of it, because
You won't.
So, but that's what I, I feel like we're, we're trying to talk about, how do we, how do we get it like an even playing field? But the applicant is the one that's trying to do something that they are financially vested, invested in. They're the ones with the risk and everything at stake. So I'm, I'm okay with allowing them to present what they're proposing to do in a way that we can adequately get all the details that we need to make the decision we need to make without having to say, well, if we give them this 10 minutes, then we gotta give, you know, them 10 minutes, and we gotta give everybody in the audience the ability to come up and make a presentation. I just think it's, I just think it can get real messy and real out of hand real fast.
I agree on some of this. I disagree I, I agree on, on some of this. I, I disagree that the, that the applicant is the only person that has financial interest in, in what's going on. I think the very reason we get thirty people out there is because they all feel like they have a financial interest in what's happening. And those people out there have to live with the decisions that were made unnecessarily. So, I, this is why I think it's important for everybody to be able to use the same platforms to display and, and present in a way that they think best makes their point.
I mean, I, again, I, I don't feel like this is their only opportunity to tell me how they feel about the project. If they wanna create a PowerPoint presentation and send it to me, I, I, I just don't, I don't, yes, everybody is, the applicant is not the only one who is financially invested. However, they are the one with the most at stake. So, and, not to say that everybody around them is also not, but I also know, I've been doing this long enough, that it's not, you know, it's not the great thing that the applicant is gonna say, and it's not the horrible thing that everybody around it is presenting it as either. So, I, I mean, I, I just don't, I, I'm, I'm not really in support of using the AV system in short. I, I, I don't really wa, feel like we need to go there. I, I just don't.
So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do just a couple of things here. So, I would, I would, I would concur that typically, the applicant on a vector has most dollars at risk. I would dis, I would disagree heartily that they have the most risk. Because if I go through and look at most of the people that I know, the single biggest investment's their house. So, I would think that if they go through and they, and that depreciates drastically, they've lost a lot more than the applicant's gonna do, so a percentage basis.
But not all applicants are developers. Some people are actually developing a home on their own property.
I understand. We, we use the word developer here generically, and I, and I'm not picking on developers. But you can put that, put wherever you want to, and that's dead. I will say that there's a valid type of extrapolation. What if everybody did this? I, I, I can't buy into that, because there's other cities doing this exact thing that seem to get out of council meetings in the same day they start. So, I, I just, I can't, if we were, if we didn't allow people to speak right now, we're having discussion about should we allow people to come in to speak, we'd be having the same discussion about, well, what if fifty, fifty-seven people show up in three minutes? We'd be having the same discussion, just on a different topic.
And let me take it, let me take it out of that adversarial real quick, because you could have just somebody coming up for public comment, and whatever their particular agenda is, they've got a PowerPoint. I haven't seen that yet, but it'll, it's coming. Or they have a YouTube that they want.
They're flipping there.
So, 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 there's, there's a necessity for maybe some guardrails in this conversation. Not in the adversarial way, but just somebody wanting to come up and show their, their latest videos of Louisville Thong Man, you know, whatever it is. So, so that's one. Another example in my personal, when we were talking about changing our sexually oriented business ordinances several years ago, the body paint artist for the organization came with three ring binders of all the beautiful art that she had done. You'd thought the mayor had been bit by a rattlesnake when that hit his desk. I was not the mayor at the time, but those pictures were pretty purient. If, 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 I mean, they, there was not a whole lot that you would wanna put up on a public television. But, again, context, that's just my personal experience. Those, are they one-offs? Sure. Could they happen? They, they have happened.
Let me, let me ask this question. If they, if somebody had stood up in the back of the poster and printed out one of those pictures, what would have happened?
They, is it, is it, is it on our YouTube? No.
We cast everything, don't we?
We don't have a camera going that direction.
And when I watch the videos, I see the entire, I see the chamber, and I also see cuts over to the, I mean, I can see people.
If they were standing at the back door, you, you don't see the back door. But if they were standing on one of the wings and did that, yeah, you, yeah, they could possibly.
Can I ask a question I wanted to ask about ten minutes ago? That is, the wording here does not specifically keep this at a public hearing level.
Right.
To me, it blankets all of it, so we can have presentations on everything. So, we need some discussion about that. But I also want to know about, to properly screen this for cybersecurity stuff, because you know the type of emails that Chris and I have received. I would not put it past people to put something up there, just for the shock and awe of it. But I'm, it would be screening for malicious content like that. But how, how much advancement would you need the presentation? If we get this on a Wednesday and it goes out public on Wednesday, if they have a presentation submitted by noon Thursday, because we're talking business, it's business days. It's not calendar days.
Correct. So, so what we would like to do from a cybersecurity standpoint is, some of the other cities, as far as the model, looking at, at two business days, I think would be adequate time for us, 'cause we'd like to look at anything coming from the public really in a zero trust model. And what we would do is, we'd take that presentation, and we would open it up in a sandbox environment, right? So, there's nothing that's connected to it networking-wise, to ensure that there's no malware or ill intent. The problem with doing it real time, we do have endpoint protection on these laptops, but again, that's, it should catch it, right? That's number one. And number two, you don't want that to be what's happening out in your public forum, right? Is that it comes up and, and we've got something that's truly infected.
They may not even know it's infected.
Why not?
They may not even know what just happened.
But we have to be extra, I mean, in lot of the, a lot of the things that have happened with the, the municipalities around here, the hospital systems, I can go on and on.
Absolutely. But to your question, we would prefer two business days if at all, you know.
Where to get, where to get ten of these at once?
The volume's not, it's not necessarily the volume as much as it is truly scheduling it out, right? Because I would want my security people to actually do it. And so, if you're doing it the day of, it's not really so much the time, it's really the scheduling, right? On our part, as far as resources. So, whether it was one or ten, if we had, you know, two business days, it would be applicable for us.
I, I would assert, if we had a, more of a liberal attitude towards this and say, we can't just do this once a year. We come back and say, man, we tried that, it went to hell. Let's come back and review that policy again. That's after discretion, council. We don't have to review that. But I'd rather not worry about the possibility of a thousand people giving presentations all at one time. Let's see if it happens first, and we can address that as one, as a, a policy adjustment. That, that's what I'd do. And Chris, to your point, actually, open up in a sandbox. I'm assuming that that AV equipment isn't a secure log as administrative user. So, if something goes in there, it gets, it gets contained, it can't propagate out as, as a ransomware. So, I'm assuming you have all those things besides just, you've got layers of security, not just everyone protection, I'm assuming.
That is correct, sir.
And how do we secure, let's say they submit their thing, they have any opportunity when they bring that document Monday night to change that document?
That would be problematic. So, you'd really wanna go with your first revision that we've reviewed.
And how we know what we're getting from them is the same document? Does it, do they have any opportunity to change that document by Monday night?
So, in the manner in which we're speaking, they would submit it to us two business days prior, and there would not be any revision, you know, capabilities.
They're, they're not in control of Plankton, they are.
Yeah.
That's correct.
I, I think I want some more clarity on this and, and.
Other thoughts?
I could just see some major things going on with our whole system.
Have we had, Jennifer, you were looking into this. What major things have we seen for those other ten survey cities that we talked about? What, what can we learn from that about doing this?
Our survey really just was whether or not they allow it. I mean, I could find out more information from them if you'd like about how it's working.
Yeah, I, I mean, that's what Councilman Kate's looking for, I think, to remind them, see, what are the gotchas? Yeah. Have they affected the whole system of ransomware? You know, what, what's, what's going on with those guys?
And just because it hasn't happened, so don't be poking at me, okay? Just 'cause it hasn't happened doesn't mean it won't happen, okay?
Just because, just because we have it doesn't, doesn't mean we shouldn't do it.
That's right.
Well, and I'd also like to get into more detail about what, what specifically we're talking about allowing this for. Is it regular hearings, public hearings?
Yeah, that's, and, and we need to iron that out too, 'cause that's a whole nother thing, okay? I can see something like this for the public hearing, but I'm not so sure. I want it on every single thing that comes to pass and comes across. We can kinda iron that out. I know, we're not giving y'all any direction at all.
No, I think you've got some good direction there, so. I think, I think you want some language and some clarity on what other cities are, have, have encountered. I think you're wanting, at the very minimum, some conversation around where in the city, where in the meeting AV is allowed or is not. I don't, I'm, I'm hearing maybe not blanket AV, just specific AV. Well, I think you, I think you've got some direction there.
I think you could even go so far as to say, it must be PDF. We're not gonna take Prezi and Canva and every other thing. I think, I think there's some opportunity to standardize that stuff. Councilman Kate, I wasn't, I wasn't poking at you. I don't want you to.
Did you say Jillian?
No, no, no. What I was saying, everybody here has been, not everybody, but there's been a lot of generalities. What if a thousand people did this? What do we, that's why I was speaking in general, is whether, whether it was speaking in the room.
No, I, I think that's a fair conversation. I appreciate, I appreciate everybody kinda digging into it. I mean, this, I mean, we're talking about people's rights, their, their freedom of speech, and we're also talking about, you know, making sure that there's, there's a structure around that. So, it's, it's, it's a effective use of taxpayer dollars all the way around. So, I appreciate, I appreciate the context. I appreciate the thoughts. Y'all dig in. Give Jennifer any additional information that you think you might need.
Jennifer's coming.
Yeah. We got, we got time.
We do have time. We need to do this right.
Nothing we have is broken, so.
Well, we're not even doing this.
Can I, can I make one, one more thing I just thought about that is, you know, I, I also want to, I wanna be able to set an expectation that if we do allow somebody to get up and give a presentation, there's still a time limit that is, that, that is the, that still is, what supersedes your presentation. So, if you come in knowing you have five minutes and you, you bring in a twenty-slide presentation, I, I don't want people to get upset if they're not able to get through their whole presentation because they run out of time.
Yeah. So, I appreciate you taking the time on this. I, I think it's, I think it's important. So, and, and I'm, I'm excited to see two things. Number one, we, we give more time than most cities do. And number two, that we have language in place that does protect against some of the lawsuits I've seen. So, we, we're already in a pretty good place. I think all we're doing is, is refining it so that, so that, you know, whoever comes down next doesn't have to, it's not, it's not the first time they see it.
We still have one issue to go through, don't we?
Yeah, we do.
Okay, good, sorry.
Just look along.
Yeah, there it is.
It's the last item.
Okay.
So, we're in school protocol right now. We, the speaker's asked to approach the podium and state their name and address for the record. Again, looking at our survey cities, you know, the majority of our survey cities also have that requirement. There's a few that don't, and there's one that's considering changing it. The reason this came up is staff has concern, some concerns is this, this may cause some security issues, you know, for residents having to state their name, I'm, I'm sorry, state their address for the record. So, our recommendation on this is for, is to require the speaker to state their name and city for the record, so long as they have filled out the address on their speaker card.
That's exactly what I was going to add.
I was gonna say the same thing.
Yes. And if they haven't.
Their city of residence does matter too.
Yeah, me too. I was gonna say the same thing.
And if they haven't filled out their full address on the speaker card, then what?
They'll be required to put an address on the speaker card. Now, are you gonna vet that? I don't know, but.
Well, I mean, you.
But yeah, I just, this worries me.
One, two, three, Main Street.
There's nothing that says, yeah, there's nothing that says I don't, I can always put one, two, three, Main Street.
Oh, I see what you're saying. If you don't know.
Not everybody's, not everybody's a rule follower.
I live on seven seventy-seven Suckerbeal Road.
Yeah, but I, I, I like this solution. I think that covers my concerns.
Suckerbeal Road.
Are we good?
We're good.
Are we good there?
We're good.
Okay.
This will last long.
Nothing more? Okay.
Did we, did we, do you have any questions?
We have any other questions right now, we're done.
We're done.
Hey, great job, guys.
Are we done?
Appreciate that. Yeah. We're gonna go back into regular session, and first up, I have a proclamation down there. All right, PD? Is this one from? Who have I got picking this one up? Gina?
Brian.
Is it Brian? Oh, Brian. Okay. There we go. There we are. Good Neighbor Day. Sorry, it came, it came through PD for me for some reason on, I don't know what, why I'm thinking. How are you, Brian?
Good.
Good. Glad you're here. All right, so we have a National Good Neighbor Day. So, isn't that like the default? You're just supposed to be a good neighbor? We have a day for this?
You have to.
We have to? Okay. I, I like it. I like that we're uplifting it. That's good. So, today I give the, the joy to give a proclamation for our, our Neighborhood Services team, and we'll just go right through here, because there are a few warehouses to get, warehouses to get through. So, first is, whereas neighborhoods are vital to safe, healthy, and inclusive communities, yet many Americans do not know their neighbors and often view a good neighbor as one who keeps to themselves, and whereas rising isolation and loneliness undermine physical and mental health, reduce life expectancy, weaken social cohesion, and diminish overall well-being, and whereas strong neighbor relationships enhance health, resilience, civic engagement, crime prevention, disaster response, and ultimately create safer, healthier, and more inclusive communities, and whereas to support the big move, diverse and thriving neighborhoods, the city empowers residents through grants and programs such as the Neighborhood Enhancement Program, Love Your Block Mini Grant, and Rock the Block Trailer. Now, therefore, I T J Gilmore, Mayor of the City of Louisville, on behalf of the Louisville City Council, do hereby proclaim September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five as National Good Neighbor Day in Louisville, Texas, and encourage all residents to observe this day by introducing themselves, getting to know and connecting with their neighbors. With that, let's give Brian a hand for all the work he does and the Neighborhood Services team.
Thank you. Mayor Gilmore, members of City Council and fellow residents, thank you for this National Good Neighbor Day proclamation. Having lived in Old Town Louisville for more than ten years, I have witnessed firsthand the spirit of kindness, connection, and the service that makes this community so special. It is an honor to accept this recognition and to be a part of a city that truly values what it means to be a good neighbor. Together, we can make Louisville not only a stronger city, but a welcoming home for all. Thank you.
of the City of Louisville, Texas, establishing the tax rate and tax levy for the City of Louisville, Texas for the year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six, upon all taxable property in said city in conformity with the laws of the State of Texas and the charter provisions and all ordinances of said city, providing repeal or providing for severability and providing for an effective date. In accordance with state law, a public hearing is being held on the proposed tax rate for the twenty-twenty-five tax year. Section twenty-six point oh five D of the Texas Property Tax Code requires a governing body to hold a public hearing to adopt a tax rate for the current tax year if the proposed rate exceeds the lower of the voter approval or no new revenue rate. The proposed tax rate was recommended by City Council at the Budget Workshop held on August ninth, twenty-twenty-five. The total tax rate proposed for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six is point four one nine zero zero nine. This is a decrease of point zero zero three four two six from the prior year rate of point four two two four three five. The proposed tax rate exceeds the no new revenue rate of point four oh nine six six seven by two point three percent, but does not exceed the voter approval rate of point four one nine oh oh nine. Since the proposed tax rate exceeds the no new revenue rate, specific language is required by ordinance. The vote on this ordinance must be a record vote and approved by at least sixty percent of the members of the governing body. For the City of Louisville, this would equal to at least five voting members. The motion to adopt the ordinance must be made using specific language as found in the recommendation below. It's a recommendation that the City Council approve the proposed ordinance adopting the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six tax rate with the following motion. I move that the property tax rate may be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of point four one nine oh oh nine, which is effectively a two point three percent increase in the tax rate. All right, and the public hearing on this is now open. Let's see here. And this is, is this public comment on this one, Jennifer? So, okay, I've got Sergio Mayato here, here to, to speak on public hearing, item D one. Would you mind? It's probably sitting right there in front of me. Mr. Mayato, if you would please state your name or, uh, name and address for the record, please. please.
I'm sorry, you know, this is preparation, my exposition.
You're fine.
Every time me leaving here 18 years in Louisville, every year increments in the taxes. And me look in the city, the city now good, every year, every year, every year. The, the good here in the, the city Louisville, every time is the police, the department of police is number one for me. They did, me check the streets, the ground not good, and the grass in the area, the Hebron and the 25, every time is tall, and the parks are not good. Every time me check total, my payment, my taxes, no reflection in the city. And this is for, I mean, not like it, this is one increments. I don't know, you, you, you said the, the, the mayor and the money and the, and the Louisville city. This is, but for me, it's a big problem. Every time my neighbors, they're no, they're no good, that they're from their homes, the people last two years, they check every time the streets, the neighbors, they're good. Every time the guys for the, sorry, the warning from the door, this, this last year, nothing. Nothing the people. The people no, no walking, every time in the trucks, this is the job noise, noise good. This is the lights in the school, every, every light, the light every time, change the guys. This is, this is one problem. I don't know.
I appreciate your input, and thank you, thank you for your concerns. If, if you, if you have further concerns, you can absolutely reach out to city staff or to your council members, and, and we can address any specific concerns that you have. So, but thank you for your feedback.
Mayor, I'm sorry, but before, and I wish I spoke Spanish, I really do, because this is important. If anybody, have you seen the R. Louisville, Texas app before? And if somebody could help me translate on my behalf, that is a great tool to report these sorts of things. I will tell you, that gets taken care of pretty quickly. It also gives us a record, so we can see if there's hotspots in the area. Failing that, if you come back with a ticket ID, if you send anybody on council or mayor or even staff that ticket number, we can look into it for you as well. But there are tools out there, and I wish we could see everything all the time, but we really count on citizens like you to come back and say, this is wrong, that's wrong. So if anybody can help me get that message, Chris, thank you so much. I appreciate you. Thank you for coming in.
There any other comments for the public hearing? If there are none, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you'd please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Counsel, I need a motion on the ordinance.
Mayor, Mayor, I will, I will be making the motion to approve this ordinance, but I do want to clarify and reiterate what is in the public comments or in the caption comments.
Can you speak closer to the?
Okay, is that better?
Yes.
Okay. I do want to make some comments before I present the motion. In the, in the caption that the mayor wrote, read, it does point out that we are setting a tax rate of .4, um, .41, I can't read it now, um, 419, which is actually lower than the tax rate last year. Unfortunately, our, the legislature requires that our, the motion that I'm going to read, the legislature insists that we call this a tax rate increase, and I'm just, want to be on the record as saying, this is really, we are, we are not increasing the tax rate. We are, it is admittedly a rate that is going to increase the amount of revenue that the city gets, comes in, but the increased revenue is due to increases in assessed valuation and increases in the, in the amount of property in the city. So I just want to go on record, before I read this required language, that this is really, we are not increasing the tax rate, we are increasing the amount of revenue that we're bringing in.
Councilman Troyer, I want to go on record with you. Thanks, that's what I said. Thank you so much for that.
Other comments?
Okay, with that, I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of .0, .419009, which is.
Bob, I'm, I'm going to need you to go back to the beginning of that because the language is not the same.
I'm sorry?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what you're reading, but this is the, that's the caption.
Okay. So the motion is just the I move portion, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, I got, I got Liz over there looking at me sideways too, so. Okay.
Oh, okay. I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of .419009, which is effectively a 2.3% increase in the tax rate.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye or pressing the little button and making it go up to six because it is now unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Councilman Troyer. Item two, public hearing. Consideration and ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending the fee schedule of the City of Louisville by amending fees related to community engagement, engineering, finance, fire, library, municipal court, neighborhood inspection services, parks and recreation, and planning, authorizing existing fees, providing for repeal or severability and effective date. A public hearing on the fiscal year 25-26 fee schedule is being held to provide an opportunity for public comment as part of the annual budget process. Changes to the fee schedule based on an analysis of current charges as compared to cost recovery goals and/or comparison to surrounding entities is conducted. Resulting modifications are proposed by the departments, pardon me, actual fee schedule information is located on the city's website within the finance section. This repository is maintained by the City Manager's Office. Proposed updates in this year's fee schedule include changes to community engagement, engineering, finance, fire, library, municipal court, neighborhood and inspection services, parks and recreation, and planning, and it's recommended that the City Council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption. The public hearing on this is now open. I do not have any public comment on this. Counsel, if there are no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you'd please vote. Motion to close passes unanimously. The public hearing is now closed. I will entertain a motion to approve the ordinance.
Move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
That was weird. I saw your name pop up there.
Motion to close the public, motion to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
And a second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by voting. And we have six to nothing. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, counsel. Item E, visitors forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the City Council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. I do have Mr. Brent Kirkendall. My apologies, I always get that.
You did good.
And sir, name and address for the record.
Brent Kirkendall, 1702 Pebble Beach Drive, Louisville, Texas. Mayor Gilmore, I come before you today to announce the first, as far as I'm aware of, citywide prayer rally to be held at Wayne Ferguson Plaza on October the 4th this year. You can say amen or 10:04, October 4th. By the way, the time is also from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, so we could say from 10:04 on 10:04. 10:04? Kind of corny, I know, but anyway.
PD got it.
10:04. The purpose of this rally is to gather the body of Christ, the Christian church, to gather, to thank God for the 100 years of blessing that He has bestowed upon our city. By the way, I've had the privilege of calling this place my home for 55 of those 100 years. The history books hold that circa 1846, the first public building in this area was erected at where the old hall cemetery now rests. That building served as a meeting place for four different churches, the Baptist, the Methodist, the Presbyterian, and the Church of Christ. This historical precedent demonstrates the early spirit of Christian unity at that time, likely a unity that was necessary for survival on Holford Prairie. How much more today do we need the church to rise up, to be a beacon of hope, offering light in the darkness, and extending God's love to all? We are called to disciple others, bring healing and restoration, and actively resist the forces of evil, diversity, and hate. I believe that this unified prayer gathering will empower us to more effectively fulfill this divine commission and experience a powerful move of God in our city. A famous quote goes like this, "The only thing necessary for the triumph of evil is that good men do nothing." Mr. Mayor, I'd like to extend an invitation to you, City Council, and other city leaders to join us, that is, the 12 churches that are coming together on October 4th over here at Wayne Ferguson Plaza, for this day of prayer, either to address, address the gathering or to simply come and stand with us. Also, in light of the current political turmoil in our country, I want to petition the city to provide some extra police patrols in the park on that day. In closing, I want to read a Bible verse from the prophet Jeremiah. God said, "But seek the welfare of the city where I have sent you, and pray to the Lord on its behalf; for in its welfare you will find your welfare." For more information, you can visit our website, prayerrallylewisville.com. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. I don't have any other public comments for visitors forum, but I did have some ecomments that came on. They were actually regarding our workshop earlier today. These are all ecomments that counsel should have in, in your packets or in your inbox, so I'm going to be brief on these. Thomas Roche is in opposition, would like to have a full 10 minutes, would like to have access to AV systems. Georgia Smiley also expresses similar sentiments. Phil Smiley is in alignment with Georgia, which is probably a good thing for marital bliss, but they are both independent people and absolutely think they're own, but in this one, they, they both are in agreement. And then I've got Rick Vidal, who's also in opposition and would like to keep the time in at 10 minutes for public hearings. All right, item F, consent agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests. For a member of the public to request removal of an item, a speaker card or e-comment must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. I do not have any consent agenda comments, so with that, I'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you please vote. Motion to approve the consent agenda passes unanimously. Item G, regular hearing. Consideration of alternative standard to the IH 35E corridor overlay district standard associated with building orientation located at 1.94 acres of the northwest corner of Interstate Highway 35E and FM 407, legally described as Blake C. Bowen Edition, Block A, Lot 2B, Zone Light Industrial, as requested by Daniel Stewart of Development Engineering Consultants LLC on behalf of the property owner, Louisville 407 and 35 PS. 25-07-10-ALT STD is the case number. Chipotle is seeking one alternative standard to modify the building orientation required by section 6.8.1.1.2.1a of the Unified Development Code, which requires the longer side of the building to be parallel to FM 407. The modified orientation will facilitate the construction of a new Chipotle with a drive-through and the preservation of space for one additional lot for development as, at the hard corner of FM 407 and IH 35E. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval, six to nothing, on September 2nd, 2025. It's recommended that the council approve the alternate standard as set forth in the caption above. Richard Lukey, our planning director, is available for questions. Counsel?
I had a, I had a question. So is the undeveloped lot that this is two lots or one lot that's being subdivided into two?
Correct.
Correct? So is there anything that we're doing on this lot that's causing an issue with the other lot that would prevent it from being properly developed in accordance with our
Approving the alternative standard would increase the chances and facilitate more options to develop the, the hard corner by allowing the orientation that's requested.
Okay, so you're saying that by orienting it this way, instead of having it flipped 90 degrees, it's making, it's allowing this lot to be more narrow?
Correct.
Other questions or concerns?
I want to make sure I understood that, because that's, that's a point I hadn't considered. So in essence, what we're saying is if we approve this one to be the smaller side facing the street 35, we're basically saying the other lot's going to have the same request. I'd assume otherwise it can't be developed properly.
It'll just have more options. The, the hard corner normally needs to be a little bit larger to, to, to provide, you know, the options for whatever is developed there. We found that those, those sites tend to have a little bit higher intensity. It could be a restaurant, could be hotel, but if this lot were, were required to have the longer side, it would be wider, and it would, it would be taking space away from that corner lot. It would be limiting its, its options for its ultimate development.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, if there's no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the alternative standard as set forth in the caption.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item eight, consideration and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Louisville, Texas, amending the previously adopted and approved budget ordinance for the fiscal year October 1, 2024 to September 30, 2025 by providing supplemental appropriations to various funds and providing an effective date. The purpose of this ordinance is to amend the fiscal year 24-25 adopted budget to include all supplements and changes approved by city council throughout the fiscal year. Appropriations include the routine supplements completed each year for prior year encumbrances, purchase orders, that overlap into the next fiscal year. Items presented in the mid-year report in May, other individual items as requested throughout the year, and appropriations that correct year-end balances. It's recommended that the City Council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Counsel?
Move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Reports, I've got City Council. I do not have any staff reports this evening, so I'll start with Councilmember Meredith to my right.
Yes, Mayor, I've got some library activities for the week. Chill coloring week for all ages, Tuesday through Thursday, September 16th through the 18th, 11:00 AM to 7:30 PM. Friday and Saturday, September 19th and 20th, 11:00 to 4:30 at the Hive Maker Space. No registration is required. Tween scene for children age nine to 12, Wednesday, September 17th, 4:30 to 5:30 at the Bennett Program Room. Free ticket required. Folded fabric pine cones for adults, Thursday, September 18th, 6:00 to 7:30 PM. Saturday, September 20th, 2:00 to 3:30 PM at the Crawford Meeting Room, and registration is required, and that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Troyer? Councilman Troyer?
Yes. Yes, Mayor, I have a number of items for the Louisville Grand Theater. First of all, performances, performance of Old Town Neighbors presented by the City of Louisville and Louisville Playhouse will be on September 19th through the 21st with two performances on September 20th. We were privileged to see preview of this performance, and it's well worth, well worth attending for anyone who would like to see some of the history of Louisville played out on stage. Secondly, opera presented by Louisville Lake Symphony, September 19th, and then We Call It Tango, a sensational Argentine dance show presented by We Call It Tango, October 3rd. And finally, every Friday night, the Acoustic Jam Session presented by the Visual Art League of Louisville. And then there are two activities going on there, specifically rehearsal for Western Days Flash Mob presented by R Productions Theater Company, September 20th. So I guess if you want to be, if you want to be part of a flash mob, that's going to be rehearsal is the 20th. And the Crafting Co-op presented by the City of Louisville, September 20th, October 18th, and November 15th. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Kelly?
So I just want to remind everybody, we have a 2035 Visioning Committee, it's coming this Thursday. That's a great time to go out, there's three hours, but I think it's come and go, is that accurate? It's come and go, give some input. Yes, so it should be, should be a lot of fun. Went, I went to one of those a few years ago for 2025, just great, you get an opportunity to give your input about what you think this city should look like in the next 10 years. I'm also going to take just a minute here, it's astounding to me how much we have to do in this city, and when I hear people talk about there's not culture, there's nothing to do, you just got to get out and look, or just, just attend, you know, attend one meeting and hear you've got Councilman Troyer, Councilmember Meredith, myself, Councilwoman Cade, anybody up here, talk about all the great things to do in this city. Just make a tiny bit of effort and you can find some great things to do within our city. And that's everything, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Green?
Well, I think my, my thunder has been stolen, but I do think that Patrick's interested in, in that flash mob.
That, that seems, that seems like a direction he'd go. Councilmember Tipton?
On September 28th, Westside Baptist Church is having a HBCU worship service at 9:45 a.m. on Sunday morning, and they will have the Prairie View University and Grahamlin State University marching band, so invite you all to come out on that Sunday.
I have to say, if you've never seen their drum lines, it's amazing.
I don't think I really have anything that they haven't already said, except that Western Week will be coming up. Two more weekends.
Yep, two more weekends, we're ready to go.
Two more weekends.
Councilmember Tipton, do you know if that's going to be indoors or outdoors at this time?
It's inside the church.
Oh, that is glorious, because, because that is so many tubas in one space. It's, it's amazing. This is probably one of my favorite events, in the top, in the top four of things in Louisville is HBCU Sunday at Westside, so I thank you guys for doing that, and if y'all, y'all, it is a religious experience, I'm going to tell you. Those, those kids come out to play. With that, I want to say thank you for everybody who has been working on, we had our Bull Riding Event this past weekend. I see a lot of folks gearing up for Western Days, I see a lot of new businesses that are starting to open up down here in Old Town, hoping to take advantage of Western Days. So I think that's, that's really exciting to see that growth and development. And I agree, you know, we, we have amazing things to do all over the city, whether that's the far, far east side over in the Castle Hills neighborhood, or we go all the way to the far west side, you know, to, to all of our neighborhoods, our great parks, we've just got amazing things. And if you're having a hard time figuring out how to get plugged in, I figure you can, you can talk to any one of the folks up here, and, and we will help you be, by being a good neighbor, to help you get plugged in. With that, we do have some closed session work to do tonight, so in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.072, Real Estate, Property Acquisition, Section 551.074, Personnel, City Secretary Jennifer Malone-Ippolito, and Section 551.087, Economic Development, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development and Negotiations, we will be moving into closed session. All right, back in a regular session, as there's no further action to be taken on tonight's agenda, we stand adjourned.